Good evening, I would like to call this meeting to order. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting in the Elmhurst City Council. It's Monday, May 4th, 2020, at 7:35. And as did you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before I ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll, I will note, I think most are aware, but maybe not everyone, I regret to inform council and anybody who's listening that Alderman York has resigned his post as alderman effective April 30th. So, four days ago, Alderman York resigned. I know it was not a bad situation, just a personal situation where he took necessary steps that he needed to take. And he will no longer, he is no longer an Elmhurst City Alderman. So, we wish him the best. And when it is appropriate, we will certainly invite him back for a proper send-off. Clerk Tamer, I'd ask you to call the roll.
Deuter?
Here.
Sabatino?
Here.
Leader, absent. Dunn?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Palmsky?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Park?
I don't think she's on.
She's trying to connect.
Go ahead.
Okay. Levin?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Count Alderman Park as well?
No.
Okay. Eleven present, two absent.
Eleven present, two absent, one vacancy. But we do have a quorum, so on with the meeting. Agenda item two, written receipt of communication from the public. Just prior to this meeting, I checked, I don't believe you've had any. Can Tom Truzin or Mike Stenson or Mike Kopp hear us in the other room?
Yes, there was no public comment.
Okay, and then, so no written communication, and is anybody present for public forum?
No one is present for public forum.
Okay, before I close public forum, I do want to announce, not only for council members, but also for anybody listening, we, as we continue to work our way through this, we continue to adjust. And for our public forum, we have added a further level of public forum to make it easier for the public to participate. Not only do we continue to have City Hall open and sanitized and ready to go if anybody wants to come to City Hall and participate in public forum, but we also added the ability for people to phone in and provide spontaneous comment or public forum as well. Those guidelines are laid out very specifically on our agenda and on the city council or on the city website. So if anybody wants to participate in future meetings, any of the public that wants to participate in future meetings, they can participate in public comment, not only by coming here, but there's also a dialing component. Nobody dialed in for this week's public forum, but it is available and will be available for next meeting as well. Alderman Park has joined the meeting. Alderman Park, I see that you have joined, can you hear me?
She's not on audio yet, Mayor.
Yeah, I see the, I see that she's joined. Okay, I know we're continuing to work out some logistical bugs with Alderman Park, and Mike Stenson will be getting a hold of her. We're going to continue with our meeting. So that concludes public forum for tonight, on to announcements. Any announcements from the dais? I don't see anybody, Jim, do you? Okay, that's it for announcements. On to the consent agenda at this time, is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman wishes to see removed? If you vote no or provide further comment, please let me know. I don't see anybody, Jim, any hand raises at your end? Okay, seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Palmsky. Clerk Tamer.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader, absent. Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Alderman Park? Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
And Mulliner?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries, consent agenda in its entirety is approved. On to agenda item six, reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. 6.1, Mayor Morley, that's me. As many of you are aware, Governor Pritzker has extended the stay-at-home order until May 30th with modifications. While we maneuver through this challenging time, we are now planning for what reopening Elmhurst will look like. I want to start by saying that the safety of our residents has always been our priority, and I support the recommendations from our healthcare professionals and appreciate the governor's cautious decision to continue the mandate with several modifications. It's imperative that we do our very best to stay safe and healthy during these times. We must realize that our lives have changed and that certain measures will remain in place for the foreseeable future. Please continue to wash your hands off and remain in smart social distancing. Covering your face is now required in all indoor public places and outdoors if you are unable to stay six feet apart from one another. Please continue to care for each other by following these guidelines, and please stay at home as much as possible. As we continue to review data, I am hopeful that the governor will adjust these restrictions so that we can begin opening our businesses with proper safety measures in place. The data that I have access to, and I qualify that because there is a lot of data out there, but the data that I have access to shows that the inpatient bed count is flattening or leveling out, which, to the best of my understanding, was the primary reason we've done what we've done, which is not to overwhelm our healthcare system. So for almost the entire month of April, I have had access to, certainly not all the data, but the data that I found most concise was with our own local hospital, Edward Elmhurst Hospital. I have access to all of their data on a daily basis. Pretty much for the entire month of April, there, at Elmhurst Hospital, Elmhurst Memorial Hospital, the inpatient count has floated between about 60 and 70 for the entire month of April. I think we had a peak of maybe 72 or 73 on one day. I think as of today, it might be at 63 or 64. So that's what I'm pointing to, my data, when I say that things have flattened out. I think I speak for everyone when I believe that everybody wants us to safely open as soon as possible. I'd like to read a letter that I recently received here at City Hall, and then go into some additional details with regard to some of the efforts. And I quote, "Business is dying. If the state does not open now, there will be massive corporate and personal bankruptcies in September. Please use whatever influence you have to get the people back to work." And I know that's anecdotal, but I can tell you that it's not an isolated incident. Almost every person that I know that owns a small business that is unable to operate during this time has similar sentiments. Recently, as council is aware and the public is aware, Elmhurst City Council, I'm sorry, the City of Elmhurst is a member of a group called DuPage Mayors and Managers, both myself and city manager are members of that group. I'm the chairman of the Legislative Committee, and I serve directly behind President Cherico, who's the mayor of Naperville, and Vice President Frank Trilla out of Willowbrook. And we have created a working group to try to develop a plan to potentially reopen DuPage County. We did send a letter. We did send a letter recently, last Friday, and it's posted on a, somewhere on the city website, if not, it'll be posted before the end of the day today, where we sent a letter to Governor Pritzker. Basically, we're taking him up on something that he stated during one of his speeches, which is, while these are difficult times, he continues to gather input from pretty much everybody he can. So, as we continue to analyze the data and have more detail and better understand how this virus is in our community, how it's spread, how it can be managed, we personally believe that we have the ability to, I guess, I don't know if you want to say further peel the onion, but we have the ability to create localized and detailed ways that we believe we can open up our community, our businesses, and our society. And there might be different recommendations for, let's say, the city of Chicago that has 7 million people in a very small group, geographic area, versus the city of Elmhurst that's a little more spread out. So we sent a letter to DuPage Mayors and Managers. I know that the city manager sent a draft of that letter out to council last Thursday. I think it may be one sentence change in the whole thing, but for the most part, it did not change. And basically, it says to the governor, "We appreciate all of your hard work. We appreciate the fact that..." And when he announced the May 1st closing continued through the end of May, there were several things in there that we had been advocating for in terms of loosening the reins a little bit that he listened to. And we basically told him we're going to create a plan that we hope he will take a further look at. It is still in the planning stages, and it's something that DMMC has not voted on. We will vote on it as a collective group, DMMC, before anything gets put forward. Unfortunately, last week, a draft of the letter that we sent to the governor somehow was leaked out to the press around Wednesday of last week, and quite frankly, it was presented as final, and that was incorrect, and a lot of the reporting on it was erroneous. But the final letter is on our website, and I encourage everyone to take a look at it. Our working group that is working on a DuPage plan, again, it's not something that we plan to implement and go rogue and not work with our state and county officials, it's just a plan, because often when we are on these conversations, and I happen to be on numerous conference calls a week with DMMC, the governor, Mayor Lightfoot, county officials, often when we talk about it, their input is requesting what kind of a plan or how do you foresee it. So this is basically our way to provide input. We're working with Choose DuPage out of DuPage County, we're working with Chairman Cronin. In addition, we're working with the representatives of DuPage County Health Department. So we're not doing this in a vacuum, we're not doing this in a void, and it will be well thought out. We hope to have that plan in place, or at least our recommendation what a plan would look like. Hopefully, by the end of this week, we will be having a DuPage Mayors and Managers board meeting to further move that forward. I think on a personal note, the way I look at it is, and I think we all see this out in our daily lives, but if we can have, if Costco and Walmart and Target and Jewel can literally service thousands of people a day while practicing proper safety measures and social distancing, I believe that we could apply proper social distancing and health measures on a micro level. So take any, take, for example, any one of the retail establishments on Spring Road, for example, in Elmhurst. I believe that those folks could have the ability, and also patrons who choose, not forced to, but who choose to patronize those stores, could do so in a manner that would not compromise public health. All the while, as we roll this stuff out, we certainly keep an eye on the data to make sure that we're not creating any spiking out there in our environment. But I think it's something that's very possible that we can do. I do think that it's important that individual geographic locations are treated accordingly and aren't painted with the same broad brush. I think it was the appropriate thing for the governor to do early on, but as I said, as we learn more and have access to more data, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that we can have a very specific rollout plan to help our community and help our businesses. On a positive note, we have received hundreds of photos through our Elmhurst Stays Home campaign. As elected officials are aware, this is a campaign that we started encouraging Elmhurst to show us how they're staying positive through the stay-at-home order. I know it's received some press, but if you haven't done this, Elmhurst's very own, Brian Costello, is a bagpiper, and he lives near the Prairie Path. I'm not going to say where, but I want to say at the corner of Prairie Path Lane and Berkeley. Keep an eye on when sunset is, and if you can find yourself safely over to the corner of Prairie Path Lane in Berkeley, which is about a block and a half west of Spring Road, you will get treated to a free bagpipe serenade, and he's been doing it for the last... Six weeks, maybe? And continues to do so. So encourage you to get out, it's a fun thing, I was able to attend that with my family just the other day. In addition, I'm asking you all to continue to support local businesses, place orders when possible for anything that you need. Please think about Elmhurst if you identify anything you need, whether it's new items for your home or simply just dinner. Almost all establishments that are open have home deliveries or line up for curbside pickup. Couple other good pieces of news of note, while the Elmhurst Memorial Day Parade has been canceled for the year, we did not want to not take the opportunity to honor those that have fallen on behalf of our country. So we've got an idea, we've created an idea where we're going to bring the parade to the Elmhurst residents, and we're going to have what I'll call a 2020 Elmhurst Memorial Day convoy that actually drives through town. We are hammering out the details as we speak, and we will be posting information on the city website, but we will be honoring those for Memorial Day, and there will be a convoy going through town, and we are designing this in such a manner that it will be safe and allow for appropriate social distancing. Very happy about that and happy that we'll be able to honor those that have fallen for our cause and for our way of life. And finally, the Elmhurst Public Library is hammering out details within the next week or so where they will be offering home delivery. I know that a lot of folks, before lockdown happened, were able to get to the library and get their books. By this time, I bet they've read them a couple times over. So Elmhurst Public Library is working on a plan where, there's a lot of virtual stuff that the library has and a lot of resources they have currently, encourage you to look at that, but they are working on a delivery service that should be finalized in the next week and a half or so. So I'd ask you to keep an eye out on the library website for details, and we'll post any details that we have once we get them in communication with Mary Beth. And that's it for me. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of virtual, if you find yourself with nothing to do, you should venture over to the city history museum site. They have done a lot of virtual tours, they put a lot of effort into that. Dave is very proud of the product, and it's a good product that the museum staff has put together, not just of the museum, but of historical places in town, such as the One Room Schoolhouse and other former sites, so I would encourage that. Along with that, Cassandra has been working very hard on our newsletters that go out three times a week. We're going to start pairing that back to twice a week, but as part of that, she's been creating videos. The latest is Advice from the Senior Commission, and I want to thank Kathy Jordan for taking part in that. It's also included in our videos from the Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works, including some of our employees reading books for children to listen to. So they've been working very hard at providing content for people while they're at home. A couple other things, the last Spring Cleanup Day is this Saturday. The past two have gone off, as far as I can tell, without problems. I'm glad that we were able to work that out with Republic, because it seems like the residents are taking advantage of that, to say the least. And then a reminder that city stickers are due June 1st. Typically, it's May 1st deadline, but we extended that to June 1st so that the discount rate applies, and also attaching them to your vehicle, most importantly, by June 1st. And then last, but not least, I am very pleased to let the council know that all of our employees are back that had been diagnosed previously with COVID-19. So the three that were diagnosed have all returned to work without issue, no family problems or anything like that. So that's what I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any other reports and... I'm sorry, I didn't have my, I was muted. Any other reports or recommendations? I know that Alderman Toledo has signaled as such. Alderman Toledo, if you can hear me, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to take this opportunity during this report and recommendation section to just give a very brief update on the work that the city staff, along with the Finance Committee, has been undertaking over the past couple of meetings related to the finances and budgets of the city. And so just real quickly, starting in early April, Director of Finance, Tom Truzin, and his team began taking a look at what the possible loss in revenue for the city might be as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. They utilized a lot of different data sources, including surveying our local businesses, talking to other municipalities, and also looking back at some of the, some of the loss in revenue that happened during the 2008 crisis. And through that, they identified that a number of tax and fee revenue sources are going to take a significant hit, including sales tax, things like motor fuel tax with less people driving, the local government distributive fund, for example, with income tax likely to be lower in terms of collections from the state this year, and our share therefore would be lower. So after looking at all of this, the finance staff team presented some of their information to the Finance Committee a number of weeks ago, and projected in total, right now, an expectation that we could lose up to $9 million in revenue. So that is a big hit in the total budget for the city of Elmhurst. And after we had that discussion, the next step was to identify possible ways to cut the budget so that the budget, the budgeted revenue amount matched more closely the budgeted spending amount for the year. And so, in the last meeting, the staff working across all of the different components and departments within the city, the Finance Committee heard from Director Truzin again about a list of different items that the city could possibly cut in order to make up that $9 million loss in revenue, so that we don't have to pass that along and other types of fees or taxes to the residents of Elmhurst. Some of the things that have been identified in that list and that the city council is actually being asked to take action on tonight, for example, is we are postponing the paving program contract, and that is to give us flexibility in terms of timing. We may still be able to do that program, but it's a very big dollar amount in our budget, around $3.5 million. And by waiting on that, we give ourselves flexibility and time to see how things recover, when they recover, and allows us to better understand the impact that this will have on the budget. And so that's one of the examples that was on the list of possible things to cut. Another item that staff and city manager Gerbowski initiated very early on in this pandemic was a hiring freeze, and that is another opportunity. We are not, so when, when positions were identified in the 2020 budget to fill, we're not filling those positions. So we're trying to take steps soon in this process to give ourselves flexibility as the year goes on. And so I've been very pleased with the work that staff has done, the discussions among the Finance Committee members, and I think, I want to leave everyone with the thought that a $9 million loss in revenue is a lot of loss, but we have plans in place to cut our operating budget in a commensurate way that will still keep the city moving in the right direction, but in a smart way, given the pandemic and the unexpected nature of the economy right now. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Before I go to Alderman Dunn, and then I go to Alderman Levin, I want to touch on one of the things that Alderman Toledo mentioned, and that is our consent agenda, item 5.5, it was canceling of our contract for, and rejecting all bids for paving in the city of Elmhurst. And for anybody who's listening, that really only was for the purpose of flexibility. The paving of streets in Elmhurst is certainly critical, and it's something that we have an ongoing program for, have approximately 100 streets, 100 miles of streets in Elmhurst, and we try to redo anywhere from five to seven and a half, eight miles of streets a year. But it's also one of the things in our budget that's the biggest rubber band that allows for flexibility. So we canceled that contract because, we canceled all bids and waived everything because the way the contract was set up, had we moved forward, it limited our flexibility. So this is really just about flexibility. We're still going to have some sort of paving program in the city of Elmhurst, but it's not going to look like where we were headed before this started. And I'm going to turn it over to Bob Dunn and then Scott Levin after that. Alderman Dunn, you raise your hand.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the description, Chairman Toledo, about the response that the city's taken to address this rather serious fiscal situation that we're in. What I wanted to just touch on was, even though the passenger traffic at O'Hare is down 95%, the ONCC has restarted, we took a month or so off, but recently had the Fly Quiet Committee meeting on April 21st, and the significant action item that came out of that was the committee voted to continue to look at and examine RNAV, which is a departure method, to continue to look at that as an option for departures going forward. It doesn't mean that the Fly Quiet Committee would adopt that and recommend it, and that the ONCC would as well. We're just going to continue to examine that. The ONCC general meeting that was scheduled for May 1st last Friday was canceled, but we are scheduled to meet June 5th, most likely via Zoom. That is a rather big group, so it gets a little unwieldy to try to have that via Zoom, but from what I heard, we're going to try to do that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Alderman Levin?
Thank you, Mayor. Not really an announcement or other, is a question on your report, when you talked about the mayors and city...
Last Friday was canceled, but we are scheduled to meet June 5th, most likely via Zoom. That is a rather big group, so it gets a little unwieldy to try to have that via Zoom, but from what I heard, we're going to try to do that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Alderman Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. Not really an announcement or other question on your report. When you talked about the mayors and city managers meeting, making recommendations, I understand that due to the nature of what's going on, that you have to move quickly. I'm just wondering if there's a way you could offer some of the offerings to us so that we might have the opportunity to give input back to you as you make decisions with the other mayors and city managers.
Yeah, I think there's a way we can do that. I can tell you, like I said, and happy to convey any feedback to the mayors and managers' group. City Manager Grabowski is one of the city managers who's on the Working Committee in developing the plan that we're working on, so I'm going to ask him to add to the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. So there are six managers and DuPage Mayor and Manager Conference staff that are in this discussion, and the Health Department. And that's key to this because nothing happens here without the Health Department's blessing. So they have been a significant part of the discussion. And as we talked about it, we've had two meetings via Zoom. And in the first meeting, it was brought to us that Choose DuPage, which is the economic development arm of the county, has been working on a plan for retail similar to other states, North Carolina, Florida, Utah. There is a lot of discussion of opening at some limited capacity, whether it's 25% of occupancy, 50% of occupancy, and with, again, with Health Department oversight. So we are examining the plan, the draft plan that Choose DuPage is working on, and rather than trying to reinvent the wheel, it's been discussed that perhaps we can just lend our support to Choose DuPage Plan. So once we get the okay from Choose DuPage to share that, I'm happy to share that with the City Council.
Okay. Anyone else under reports and recommendations? No one else? No one else? Oh, Alderman Palomski.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up with Alderman Levin's question. I was wondering if there's a way for us to weigh in and additionally, if there's a way for the council or Public Affairs and Safety Committee to receive updates. I sent an email about this earlier today, about our agenda, to see if we can be involved or at least informed of the actions that have been taken or that will continue to be taken as we adapt to many changes in restrictions. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do what we can, honestly, to keep everybody up to speed and allow time for input, but this stuff is happening sometimes on an hourly basis, but we'll do the best we can. The good news is, in this case, is that both City Manager and myself are in a small group working on this with DuPage Mayor and Managers, at least the planning part. Certainly, all of DuPage Mayor and Managers, and I said this in my speech, nothing is formal and official until we've voted on it, and we do plan on putting it through our proper channels as well. But if, when we have information to disseminate, we will. Alderman Conquest, you had your hand up?
I did, Mayor. I just wanted to second what you've done. I know you talk to many of us on a regular basis, and I support your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go on to Committee Report 7.1. This is a report out of Public Works. I'd ask Clerk Tamer to read the recommendation.
This is a report. I do. Thank you. It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the unit price bid from the lowest responsible bidder, Earthworks Land Improvements and Development, for the Southwest Elmhurst WWCF, compensatory storage, wetland mitigation, and BMP facility not to exceed $155,563 be accepted and the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary City Council documents. Furthermore, in an effort to get the project started as soon as possible to take advantage of the spring growing season, due to the sensitive environmental nature of this project, the committee recommends to suspend with the rules to allow the report and resolution to be approved by the council at the same meeting. Respectfully submitted, Public Works and Buildings Committee, signed by Jim Kennedy, Chair, Marty Deuter, Vice Chair, Mark Sabatino, and Michael Brennan. Thank you.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Very good.
Yes.
Okay, so this original report was approved by Public Works and Building on the 13th. Because of the COVID situation, we pulled it back, or I'm sorry, we did not pull it back. We held on taking action as a council until the Finance Committee had had a look at our financial situation. And so with the report tonight, we are moving forward. Couple points on this is that this is required based on the permit we got for the wet weather facility down next to the, you know, by Public Works and by the wastewater treatment facility. We've gotten a good bid. The low bid was $25,000 less than the next lowest bid, and staff looked at it. We felt we're in a good position on that. And if we were to ask for a delay, we would have to go back through the county, and with everything going on, we thought that would be a difficult task at best to make that happen. So given that we have a pretty small window here to get the project completed, you know, with suspending the rules, we can actually get that work done here in May. So it's a good situation to go forward and get this completed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone want to provide additional comment? Okay. Alderman Bram, you have raised your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I support this as well due to the fact that it is part of the original permit, but my reason for a comment is to make a public request of how much have we spent on the Southwest Wet Weather Facility to date? My recollection is between 10 and 12 million, but I would like for the specific details of that to be sent out, please.
Okay, I'm sure that's something staff can pull together. I think you recognize we're working on it for a couple of years, so it's going to take a bit, but we'll get that. Any additional comments or questions? I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leeder?
Absent.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Absent.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Levin, ayes, zero nays, two absent.
It looks like Alderman Park may have joined us. She may have figured out her technical difficulty, so assuming nobody's vote is going to change, otherwise I'll call for a complete revote, I'm going to ask if Alderman Park can hear me and if she wishes to vote on this motion.
She just...
I hear the comments.
In the comments.
Repeat the chant.
Oh, look at that. All right. Well, Alderman Park getting creative. As chairman, I'm going to accept that. For those watching at home or listening, Alderman Park was able to text in on the chat function of our WebEx call, and she is voting aye. So can you restate the count, please?
Yes, we have 12 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
12 ayes, zero nays, motion carries. I think we had a bit of a scrupulous error in the setup of our council meeting agenda. Normally, committee reports is before reports and recommendations. This time, it was after, and other business jumped up before resolutions for whatever reason. But we'll still get to the business of the council tonight, but I'm going to move other business to the last item on our agenda and put number nine, Resolution, before us now. And I'm going to ask Clerk Tamer to read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the Southwest Elmhurst WWCF, compensatory storage, wetland mitigation, and best management practices facility project, and authorizing the execution of a contract between the Earthworks Land Improvements and Development Corporation and the city of Elmhurst.
Okay, to put this resolution before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Jim Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really no comments. This is just a resolution to follow up the report we just voted upon. Thank you.
Anyone else? Additional comments? Alderman Bram, you have your hand up.
No, I just forgot to take it down.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leeder, absent. Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Toledo, vote.
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
12 ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda item 9.1, which is Resolution R-48-2020, has been approved. On to other business. This is probably the worst bookend of any meeting I've ever had. I regret to inform the public and council that I also had to accept the resignation of Alderman Sabatino recently. Alderman Sabatino, I know, is in the process of changing jobs, and he has sent me a letter formally tendering his resignation from his alderman seat as of Thursday this week, so Thursday the 7th, which is why he's still on the call today. And I would also reiterate that we will have Alderman Sabatino back with us when appropriate to give him a proper send-off. But with that having been said, and the fact that we do have Alderman Sabatino with us right now, I am going to turn the microphone and the floor over to Alderman Sabatino.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So as the mayor stated, and as some of you already know, I recently accepted a position in Asheville, and this is certainly not the format of how I intended to resign from City Council. I'm broadcasting from my parents' house, where I've been living for nearly a week now, and spending some quality time with them, which includes watching reruns of television shows like Seinfeld and Everybody Loves Raymond. And it's funny, it didn't take long for me to feel that my life has become a cross between George Costanza and Ray Barone. And on top of that, my brother lives with my parents, too, so maybe it's an Italian thing, I don't know. But in any event, this was a big decision for me to leave my family and friends, and as you can imagine, my emotions are very mixed. I read a quote recently that said, "You never change your life until you step out of your comfort zone, and change begins when you're at the end of your comfort zone." So I'm hopeful that this will be a positive experience in my life. I'd like to just start off by thanking the residents of Elmhurst for their support over the years. It's been an honor serving you. To you, my fellow aldermen and friends, I greatly appreciate your dedication, your hard work that makes our city so great. It's been a great ride. I have the utmost respect for all of you, and it's really been an honor to serve with all of you. I want to thank Alderman Deuter, my wardmate counterpart for her collaboration and insights over the years, Jim Grabowski, Mike Kopp, Don Sorino, all the department heads, our police and fire chiefs, city staff. You know, it all starts with a solid foundation, and you are all the best of the best. Lastly, I'd like to thank Mayor Morley for his leadership, his wisdom, his humor. Sometimes he's funny. His Clark Kent disguise around town, his memory of '70s cartoon characters, and most of all, his friendship. What I won't thank him for are his matchmaking abilities. You know, I'll miss you all, and it's not a goodbye, it's a see-you-later. So thank you all and see you later.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman Sabatino. I'm glad I can still call you, that at least for the short term, and appreciate your comments. Yeah, this is a pretty... My mom said if I was going to call something crappy, I shouldn't call it anything at all. So it's a pretty bad way of saying goodbye, so you're right, this isn't saying goodbye right now. It's just saying, "See you soon, and we look forward to having you back for a proper send-off." However, if anybody wanted to add any comments before I call for a motion to adjourn, I will turn over the floor to anybody at this time. All right, I see Wardmate Alderman Deuter has her hand raised, and I think Alderman Kennedy as well. I'll go with you, Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, was disappointed and it was hard news to hear, but I appreciate that our lives outside the council are all still taking place, and there are changes that we can't always control, and it's not an indication of someone's commitment when the job has to end. So I wanted to thank Alderman Sabatino for his service to the city, in particular, the residents of the First Ward. And I also want to thank him for being a very, an incredibly solid wardmate in the way that we were able to respond. Sometimes we would divide and conquer, other times we would both dig into a particular issue, but you were always very available and very responsive to concerns that were raised by the constituents, and I appreciated that, and I think the residents did as well. You genuinely care about the city and really want what's best for Elmhurst, so there's not a whole lot more that can be asked for. So thank you very much for your friendship and your service, and you'll be missed. Thank you.
Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Mark for serving on Public Works and as an alderman for all these years. I will miss seeing him at FFC when it reopens, so I guess I'll just have to find you, Steve, and we'll have to go there together. So that'll have to be the acceptable substitute for working out there. So, Mark, good luck to you in Nashville. I'm sure you're going to have a good time. You'll do great things there and keep in touch. Thanks.
Alderman Levin, and I'll go to Alderman Mulliner. Scott, you're on mute.
Just sound louder? I don't know. I got the important stuff out already. Alderman Sabatino, I just wanted to wish you well. I'm looking at a picture from your last election night when you were surrounded by a lot of aldermen offering you congratulations. I'll miss having you on our important lobbying efforts down in Springfield, but I look forward to you coming back so we can give you a proper send-off when this all passes. Good luck to you.
Alderman Mulliner.
I'll miss having you on our important lobbying efforts down in Springfield, but I look forward to you coming back so we can give you a proper sendoff when this all passes. Good luck to you.
Alderman Mulliner.
Say that again. Okay, Mark? Just wanted to have the opportunity to say thank you for all you've done for us as it relates to economic development, even before you were on the council. You did a lot of work that helped us build this city and the infrastructure that we have. It's truly appreciated that all the work that you've done for us and the representation that you've done for the First Ward. You will be missed, but your friendship has been fantastic, and hang in there, and hopefully we'll see you soon.
Okay, I don't see anybody else with, uh-oh. Alderman Palomski. Mute.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also thank Alderman Sabatino. We will miss you, and want to let you know that you, too, are part of the foundation that makes Elmhurst what it is, and you have contributed to that, as was noted from before your time as an alderman. And I know that you have contributed to the growth and the vibrancy of downtown. Look forward to a proper sendoff. Good luck to you.
Alderman Dunn?
Alderman Sabatino, I'm sorry to hear the news that you're moving on, but I know it's for the best. I know, I want to thank you for your service, and even way back to your service in the community. I know you were involved as a coach with various baseball teams, Elmhurst Electric and others. So thank you for for that. We're continually tapping into the community to to be involved and to help the youth out, and everyone really appreciated that, I think. I know you're a music guy, so you'll really enjoy Nashville, and I hope you get out and get a chance to to play some music and enjoy it down there. All the best.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, first off, I wanted to wish you the best of luck. As a fellow committee member, I have one request. As you depart, could you please, please leave your pen at your seat so I could use it to sign any future reports? Secondly, as you know, my my son JB is attending U of I, which I know you're a grad of, and, you know, potentially, we can tailgate down there and reminisce over old times from here in Elmhurst, as well as your experience at U of I. Thanks a lot, Mark, and I do wish you the very, very best.
Anyone else? Alderman Bram?
Yes, this time I remember to lower my hand before I keep talking. Alderman Sabatino, I appreciate everything that you have done. I'm going to keep my comments short because you have promised to come back for a proper sendoff. But I have enjoyed some of our long conversations, walking back from the parade back to our car, our discussions on the dais. I have not had the opportunity to be on the same committee with you. You seem to leave the Finance Committee while I joined the Finance Committee, so I think you're just dodging me there. But I do appreciate all the service that you have done, as Alderman Mulliner has stated, the Economic Development Commission before becoming an elected official. I am very happy for you in regards to finding a new position, sadly not here in Illinois, but as others have stated, I am sure you will enjoy immensely Nashville. So good luck to you and hope to see you soon.
Alderman Hanquist?
I'll back clean up. Mark, thanks for your friendship over the years. You know, I love you, and I'm going to miss you a lot, so I wish you the best in Nashville, though. Thanks for all your help. Good luck.
Okay, I think that's everybody, yeah? Okay, it needs to be a part of the official meeting. Alderman Kennedy will have to form a road trip committee. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. There you go, Alderman Sabatino. If he could, I'd let him second, but I can't. He's doing both. Motion by Alderman Sabatino, second by Alderman Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, Alderman Sabatino. We will see you down the road. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Bye.